School board meeting, we'll start with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, we, as you can probably see, we are missing a couple of board members this evening. Julie and Patrick had some prior conflicts, I believe, so we do have a quorum and we're continuing with our agenda. So I'll start with any comments from the public regarding items that are not on the agenda. All right, seeing none. Any amendments, David, to the agenda?
We do have one amendment, under nine pay structures, we're not going to be doing this evening, and we'll talk about moving that in our upcoming meeting.
Okay. Anything else?
No, that's it.
Do we know if Marali will be here?
Thought she was going to be, but...
But we'll keep an update on this.
Yep.
All right, actually, we'll move on, unless there's any other amendments, to Agenda Item Five, the student representative report announcement, and student voice, student representative application. Do you have announcements that are separate?
Yep, I have a few things that I'll announce. Next week, Grand Isle Supervisory Union, a couple of board members, along with a couple of our board members, are going to meet and just talk about ideas and options for the future, looking at enrollment trends and things of that nature, so I just want to let people know that. In addition, let me just pause there, I think that's...
Do you have board representation?
Yes, we do. Yep, we do, yep. I think it's both Julie and Patrick currently, so if that changes, then I'll let you know, but obviously, I think we're good. That's all I have.
All right, and just a quick update, that we, the board is in receipt of one student application at this point, and we're going to have some subcommittee follow-up with the individual that has submitted an application, so we should have a report out at the next meeting.
So I would say also at your place are other pieces of information, I'm not going to read through them, it's under a board announcement as well, but master planning and visioning dates that are coming, we're going to cover that again when we get to master planning and visioning, several other pieces of information, and so I just wanted to let you know that. I don't know if you have any questions on any of the items that are there. Again, most of you came into a busy parking lot this evening because we had sporting events going on, our spring sports, although winter months feels like, and a busy parking lot with parent conferences going on as well.
All right, anything else? All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item Six, the city-school collaboration.
So, just a quick update, Pat, Laduke, and myself, similar to what Elizabeth and I had been doing for several occasions, meeting with the Chair of the City Council and our city manager, Patrick and I did meet on March 25th with Kevin and Helen, and again, a lot of conversations, I would say, are consistent with communication ideas and opportunities moving forward, looking at the use of social media, looking at the use of front porch forum, all of the things that I think we've been talking about or will need to talk more about. They're eager, I think, to try to step a little bit farther out into that arena and do more, and we indicated that we're interested in trying to also partner. So, we have another meeting that's going to be coming up on April 22nd. One of the things I think we need to be clear about, particularly around, you know, all of the community meetings and master planning and visioning, is whether or not there ought to be another steering committee meeting, and if that ought to be kind of a combined, you know, some sharing and vetting, if you will, so we're not yet totally sure on how that's going to pan out, but we know we need to get another steering committee meeting in as well, so.
All right, seeing nothing else on that, we'll move to Agenda Item Seven, master planning and visioning update.
So, certainly, yeah, I'll kick it off, but mostly with just information about meetings. Again, following the 22nd, March 22nd meeting, we have other meetings that are currently being planned, or planned. We've put that information out into the other paper, we've worked hard to try to provide clarity in that it's essentially just a sharing of the same information. It's never easy to say it's going to be exactly the same, because based on the number of people that come, you know, I think it's a little bit hard, but essentially, it's the same information going out, and we're currently working to collect all of the questions that are currently coming in, and putting those on a, on kind of an FAQ process. The board will need to talk more about that, and how we're going to move forward, that's certainly something that we need to be doing. So those dates are April 26th, May 7th, and May 24th, those are the three additional community meetings. In addition, I have, along with board representation, been attending staff meetings as well, and thus far, on the 28th of March, spoke to the Orchard staff, Martin, and thank you for joining me, on the 4th, at Rick Marcott, again, all the staff there, when I say all, those that could attend, again, a good turnout, Elizabeth and Pat were able to join me. I have one coming up on the 13th, here at the Tuttle Middle School, 7:30 in the morning, and I'm looking for folks, and again, if you've already made, you know, connections with Delina or Meg to do that, then fine, if not, and you can make it, let me know, let Delina know. So that's, the high school is the 27th, and then I also have the library patrons, which I have, actually, on my travels coming back, I had spoken to one of the library trustees and said I would be happy to do that, it's going to be on April 27th, from 4 to 5, the Community Library. Senior citizens on May 11th, 2:45 to 1:45 at City Hall. So, these will all get posted up, part of just the sharing of information around master planning and visioning.
When was the high school in Chamberlain?
High school was the 27th.
Okay, what time is that?
That is 7:30 in the morning.
And what was Chamberlain?
And Chamberlain, I'm not seeing...
That was May...
Was it in...
I'm not seeing Chamberlain yet.
The outside meetings, yeah.
It didn't make it onto my list. How terrible of me. I know, I have it scheduled, I don't see it here, I'll look, and I'll report out here.
And we, have we warned for Monday's meeting?
Yes, the Monday meeting has been warned, yep.
So I'm a little, I just want to clarify in terms of sharing the same information. I think the board is anticipating additional interaction based on being able to respond to some of the initial questions that came at the March 22nd meeting, is that fair?
I would agree, yeah, I was going to say the same thing, that I would expect that we are slightly updating information as we go along, as we learn more things, as we do a little bit more additional research, I think that we should be sharing that in those meetings, but I think they should also be focused on getting feedback and not just sharing information, I don't think we've...
But I think the point is, Monday's meeting is a working session with the board, intended to plan for the next three meetings, and sort of talk about the structure of those and so forth.
Just, we were trying to be clear that, you know, those that couldn't make the 22nd, they weren't kind of going to happen in succession, like you had to be part of the 22nd in order to learn, you know, so...
Right.
What we said was, interested in learning more about the options recommended, but we're not able to make it, please join us for the following, we'll offer the same information so that we can do that. We worded that slightly different, actually, that posted out in the, that's going out in the other paper, but essentially, we wanted to make sure people had, got the information as soon as possible. So, Meg, do you know exactly what we sent to the other paper? Sorry to put you on the spot there, but...
It's on our website.
Right. I think we changed that last sentence a tad.
It says, interested in learning about the options being discussed for yourself, Burlington Schools, please join us. Following the March 22nd session, the school board is hosting three more opportunities for information sharing.
Yep, so it's not the exact same then, it doesn't lock you into the same.
So is that going into the other paper?
We, I'm pretty sure we've had, we had to submit, right?
It'll be for Thursday.
Yeah, so I did talk with Patrick.
For this Thursday, for tomorrow, or...
Yes.
For next, okay.
It'd have to be for the next meeting.
Right, otherwise, yeah, we were up on it.
The next meeting is the following Wednesday, I think.
Because we should be adding or making clear the link to the recording of the March 22nd meeting.
What you can do, I mean, certainly, we can talk about what else you'd like to do, we can make changes on our webpage at any time, and be clear, we can push more information out through, you know, our sources.
Because I think we'll talk...
No more than five minutes of repetition from what we gave on March 22nd, would be my view.
I think we're going to have an opportunity at Monday's meeting for the, have the full board have that conversation.
Yeah, yeah, to talk, right, that's true.
Right, because there could be people who were at the 22nd, and it, you know, suppose that are anxious to hear more about depth, maybe, or the same, I don't know.
Well, my bigger concern is that I think we, and we'll talk about this, again, we'll talk about this more on Monday, my bigger concern was that we really had a very narrow period for feedback on the 22nd, and I think a lot of people thought the 22nd was going to be a chance to really weigh in, and we took up most of the time, really, with our presentations, and at some point, really, this should be about getting feedback, because I mean, the information is out there, it's on our ETN, you know, we have the presentations posted, all that stuff, so I would agree with Martin, that, you know, this really needs to focus on the community telling us what they think, and then us, if we do have additional information, you know, if we've done some more research, or, you know, data gathering, or something that we would like to share, I think we should share those at the meetings and make sure they're posted, because what I, not speaking on behalf of the board, but speaking on behalf of myself, I have communicated with Abby and others online that, you know, I don't feel like, people should feel like they have to go to the 22nd and, you know, April 26th and May 7th to get all the information, they should be able to go someplace and find it, but I do feel like we need to focus on feedback from people as people learn more about this and start to form stronger opinions, really. I guess, I also had a quick question, which is, I haven't been able to go to any of these other meetings, what is kind of the format of the other meetings that you're having with community members?
It's been staff, not community, just staff, and the whole purpose is that those that were not able to make the meeting, they're critical individuals in this process, because they're, could be affected, and wanting to make sure they're, one, informed, and have the same opportunity to provide insight and ideas and questions. So that's really been the tenor of it. Most of them understand the, you know, some of the intricacies of their school and the district, because they've been around for a while, most, but nonetheless, we've given that kind of same overview, and the cost modeling that White and Burke did, albeit quite abridged version, provided the information, which they have also been able to refer back up to off the website and look at. So it's just provided the, a similar opportunity for information.
And then are they providing feedback forms, or are they just asking questions, is somebody taking notes, I mean, how are we gathering?
We're asking that they submit questions, we've got, we've got some already, I think this is going to be part of the conversation that the board has on Monday, how do you, how do you want to go about doing that, from the questions that were asked on the 22nd, how do you want to go, you know, answering those, or responding to those, what format, how readable, how are you going to, how are you going to go about doing that, including anything else that we collect, so, yep.
So, we have done some, Bridgette and I have kind of collaborated on the initial feedback from the March 22nd meeting, so if I can ask for kind of an initial report out at this, where we're at right now?
Right, so approximately 180 people were at the meeting on the 22nd, 149 of them signed in, so a lot of people came in late and sort of rushed into the meeting without signing in, we got feedback forms from 110, not every single one of them had comments, but I would say the vast, I'd say about 80, 85% of them had comments on them, so Elizabeth and I sort of just divided up the 110 feedback forms, we have a spreadsheet where we put all the data from the demographics and the rankings as people had them, and I'll come back to the rankings in just a second, and then what we've also done is put the comments into the spreadsheet so that we can kind of, at some point, if we want to do analysis on, you know, what parents are saying versus business owners, or versus, you know, other community groups, we can figure out, you know, we can sort of do some analysis on that, we're hoping that that spreadsheet can just be kind of updated as we go through these feedback sessions, so we keep everything organized, and then what we did, we also took those comments and put them in a Word document, and put them into themes, so there's some definite emerging themes that people have opinions on both directions, really, so for example, one of the themes is move 5th grade to the middle school, or not move 5th grade to the middle school, one of the other themes is high school first, you know, we really want to focus on the high school first, so there are a few other themes that are kind of falling out, I think we'll talk more on Monday about how we go about sharing that information effectively, because a lot of these are scribbled comments, and we, you know, transcribe them, but they're not in proper English, and they don't all kind of make sense unless you really read them carefully, so we'll talk about how to share that information with the public as we go forward. The rankings, there was definitely a bit of controversy, because I think people were confused about the ranking system, for some people, it felt like it was backward to rank your top choice number five and your first choice, I'm sorry, backwards, so I've got it backwards tonight, your first choice number five and your last choice number one. What we did is, when we read through the comments, we tried to adjust based on what the comments said, so surprisingly, I would say, we got good data, I would say, from about 75% or 80% of the people who did the rankings, you could tell from their comments, you know, they clearly say, I'm against school consolidation, but then they have the consolidated school ranked number five, you can tell that they did it backwards, so we flipped the ones that we could flip, the ones that we couldn't tell, where there were no comments, we just left them out of our averages, but we got a pretty good sampling of data, I would say, from that initial meeting, so we'll talk more on Monday about, again, how we share that data and the conclusions that are falling out of it, but that's kind of where we are from the 22nd meeting.
Yeah, and the draft feedback has been supplied to the board, both in raw form as well as the summarized data. I'd say we, demographic-wise, I know, I know my sample was both high identification as parents and community members.
Yeah, I'd say mine was, mine was high identification as, mostly just community members, there were, there were fewer parents than I expected in the list that I had, and again, I don't have all these, we haven't really done deep analysis on it yet, one thing that we need to do further outreach on is, all but I think three people were owners of their houses, so it clearly showed that we are not getting to the people who are in rental housing, and there are definitely some clear neighborhood biases in terms of who was able to come to that March 22nd meeting, so we'll need to do some focused outreach, I think, into some of the neighborhoods to, to get more people from certain neighborhoods into the meetings.
Well, and hopefully those other meetings that are at those schools will help.
Yeah, I think that will probably help, yeah. Yep.
Any questions or comments from, this is Martin, really?
No, I'm good.
Any questions or comments from the public?
I have a question, sorry.
Abby.
I have a question, so is it more, obviously you can tell from the email, a very interesting feedback process will be, because I have heard from several people that when you do show up and voice your concern, it's often dismissed, and it's frustrating, because the only time you can show up is the time you're invited to show up and talk, and so is the time you're planning for exactly how you're going to get the feedback, Monday's meeting, so is it Monday's meeting we should come and listen to, about when, the actual, how you're going to read and gather the feedback, because I'm wondering, is it really just people showing up at each of these three meetings, and then collecting, sort of writing down comments, and that's how it's going to be interpreted, or it will Monday, will you have a different plan for gathering, interpreting feedback?
Well, it's hard to say, Monday's a working session, so we, as a board, we have, this, we haven't really sat down as a board since the 22nd, so, I mean, Monday will be, you know, our chance to sit down and really discuss, and I think there, frankly, there are different opinions on how to go about doing that, but I would say, the communities are not the only place to give feedback, so we are, we are watching, you know, the discussion in the community as best we can, and we're also, we are getting a lot of email comments and written comments from people, which we're taking into consideration as well, and being very careful about collecting them, and make sure that we're capturing all of them.
So that's perfect, that's, that's a specific question, so if people, if we were to go back and say, you went to the March 22nd meeting, you've got the information, you don't have to go to one of these three follow-up meetings to give your feedback, if you write an email with your detailed comments, it will be taken in when you consult, when you bring in together all of the comments and find themes, and so people can see where their comments, not specifically, but you can see that they actually were included, and not just, oh yeah, I talked to a couple people, or this email came in, like, it really is going somewhere.
Right, right now, we are collecting all of the data centralized, what's coming in through the email, either independently to the board, or through the district website, through the surveys, or that were, the feedback forums that were sent out, I'm trying to think if we have another mechanism.
The comment, the online website comment.
Yeah, I think we have that. I'm, yeah, I guess I'm, I don't really know how to react to the people feel like the feedback's being dismissed, because...
Well, I don't think, I mean, I think it, I think it depends on who you listen to, because, I mean, when you all say, we really care about hearing feedback, I truly believe you, but then we'll get an email from someone in a leadership position who might say, it's always the same people who show up and talk, I'm more interested in representing the people who don't show up and talk, and I think that that's fair, but at the same time, it doesn't negate what's being said by the people who do show up and talk, so...
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know who's saying that, Abby, but, I mean, we're, I think we're, there's, trying to be some commonality in messaging, and I think Pat Laduke and the board have been pretty, you know, are trying to be really consistent around, we're taking, we're looking for the feedback, and we're, we're going to be pulling it all together.
Yeah, and I will, I mean, at this point, you know, a response is sort of, we're in receipt of the feedback, it, I know that sounds a little innocuous, because we haven't acted on it at this point, but, yeah, I mean, it, I would just encourage people to send feedback in a way that's convenient for them, and there's a lot of links to do that.
I have a question.
Yes.
I attended the March 22nd meeting, and I don't understand why you feel that it was a narrow sampling of opinion, I felt it was a widespread, intense, deeply felt opinion of reservation and skepticism about school consolidation.
Oh.
Secondly, as far as the questionnaire, it was not, that was handed out for your filling in, it was not indicated that you should fill this out, and if you were in readiness to depart, you didn't want to stay and start filling out a questionnaire, so I think there's a lot more input than you were recognizing.
I'm sorry if I misspoke, I didn't mean that it was a narrow sampling, I would say that specifically, we're missing people who are renting their housing, so there is, there are some people who were left out of that feedback, I do agree that there, I was very pleased that there were 180-some people there, comments that were shared, like your comments, for example, that were shared, you know, those have also been written down and incorporated into the feedback, so if people spoke, the challenge that we have is if no one, if you didn't speak or write down, we, there was no way of gathering that input, but if someone spoke, like you did, you know, in the meeting and expressed your opinion, that's also been captured, and we'll do the same at the other meetings, so we understand that people were in a rush to leave.
You can't make this 100% unless it's a referendum.
Right.
How would you be able to achieve that, any sampling of opinion is just a set point.
No, I would agree with you, I would agree with you, and what we're doing is, we're trying to, I think, cast the net as broadly as we can, in the amount of time that we feel we can devote to it, and get as much opinion as we can during that timeframe, and then go from there, so.
Yeah, I think the three additional meetings being held at the elementary locations will hopefully pull from folks that couldn't make the March 22nd meeting, or folks that want to provide additional feedback, but I think those are the mechanisms to kind of ensure we're getting as much feedback as possible, and ultimately, if a decision is, or a recommendation includes an action that would go to a referendum or a vote, that's, that's where we'll get 100% of the feedback, or at least the voters. Yes.
Erin, where, will there also be a questionnaire to fill out at these meetings?
I think we're, we'll have to decide that Monday.
I'm just wondering, like, obviously you know how lots of us feel, so I wouldn't need to fill out another survey, but other people that are going, I just know that sometimes you don't get to voice your opinion, you're sitting here, and then lots of people are talking, and then it'll be like, okay, no more comments, and you're like, oh, I didn't get to say what I want to say, so I don't need to fill out another survey, but if those could, some sort of survey could be available at those meetings, even if it's just for them to write down questions, because they may not have access to email and/or have the opportunity or feel comfortable saying their question.
Good feedback. Other questions or comments? All right, thank you. We'll move on to Agenda Item Eight, the superintendent's report.
Yes, so we're happy to have with us tonight another John, and I want to welcome the board to John Aben, who's here in the front, so John, welcome, and you know that we hired John back in March 7th, or you did, and I just wanted to remind you a little bit about John, and then give an opportunity for John at least to say hello, but John, as you know, has been 15 years in the, what we call the SAU 70, which is the Dresden District, which serves both New Hampshire and Vermont, and so when you want to talk about complications in education funding, from a business manager's perspective, most would say Vermont is complicated enough, but when you have to mix it in with going to many different board meetings across in New Hampshire and Vermont, John has been doing that for 15 years, he's been in the role of Assistant Superintendent in Business Services, so we welcome him, we, of course, are reminded of our departing, departing Jon Stewart, but we welcome John to the district, so John, I don't know if you want to just say hello.
I would just like to say thank you for taking the chance on me, I don't think it's a big, a big risk, myself, but I appreciate the faith you're putting in me, and I'm going to do my best to make sure that, that faith is well-put. I have had a lot of experience in school and municipal government, finance, accounting in both New Hampshire and Vermont, I'm looking forward to, to having both my feet in Vermont, where I've lived for 40 years, I've straddled the state line for, for those 40 years, and it's, it's sometimes been difficult, my latest assignment in Hanover, Norwich, has been the most challenging spot I've, I could imagine, but I really am excited about, about being here. The commute's going to be long for me, but I'll manage it, I'm excited about your city-center project, I really am, I've got a lot of experience in school construction, all kinds of construction, bond issues, you know, financing stuff, forecasting aid and tax rates, so I really think I can be of help here. John spent some time with me this afternoon, so I kind of got a, an idea where he's been, and it seems like you guys are in pretty good shape, he did show me the Marcott School, and the possibilities there, I think are pretty significant, so I just want to, just express my appreciation, and my hope that I will really do a good job for you folks, it's an exciting place to be, I really think it is, thank you.
Thank you, John.
John, on behalf of the board members that can't be here, welcome, and we're thrilled to have you on board, and as I'm sure you know, you've got some large shoes to fill, and...
John's done a great job.
He has, we're pretty proud of the five schools we've got, and the community that supports them, so there's, there's a lot going on right now, and there's a lot of challenges ahead, but we've got a very engaged community, and a great group of students, too, so our job is to make sure we keep that future going forward.
That's great.
Welcome.
Thank you, John. John, you know, just in finality, you know, John's been watching and listening from afar, and so he's, he's had some nice opportunities to just send me a few ideas along the way, and to myself and John, but just information around some of the things that are going on in education funding law, things that are paying, and so it's very astute that, number one, he's, you know, very knowledgeable, but also interested, so been watching us a lot from afar, so, again.
I noticed that the state legislature apparently is receptive to the idea of foregoing construction aid reimbursement, which I think is only due, if they're not going to give that money away to other school districts, why should they collect it back from, from former recipients?
That's in large part, you're a representative in the House.
So we're hoping.
That I think is overdue, so.
So again, we, we welcome you here, we're happy to stay for the entire evening, but we know you probably don't want to do that.
I didn't say for the entire meeting, I thought I'd listen to John's report and to see, you know, how...
Yeah, yeah, how you compare on some of those things.
He's got a bombshell to drop, I think that maybe bake off.
So, moving on, I want to just move on to the Policy Monitoring 2.4, which is the conditions, it's still in my report, and so these are upcoming activities that are coming up in May, and a little bit of some guidance, I think the answer is that we're going to schedule these folks to come, obviously, we don't have full board, but I think in the absence of your other two members, unless you're in disagreement with us, we'll bring Ron Smith back to talk about the management letter, you will notice at your place is the, the audit that John has provided, through them, the update on the retirement investment, an update on the pension actuary report, and so there's a pretty heavy load for that meeting in May, which is going to be due out on Friday, essentially, so I'll be working with Delina Tumora to look at that agenda, so it is right-sized, so that we'll be able to get that information, and I think in the past, we felt a little bit rushed with this, and so I really want to take the time necessary to... And so I really want to take the time necessary to, to make sure we get your questions answered and the information out. So that's why it's indicated under 2.4, financial conditions. The other item, monitoring report, you see on, on May 4th as well. Again, I'll be talking about whether or not we can get all that in and the municipal bond bank work that we need to do. Other paper articles, again, just put that on there just to remind board members. I think you've been doing a good job with that, but we have other ones coming up. And I'm not sure that we have individuals signed up for those other ones. Maybe we do, but I just, it would be good to know if you, if you folks know what we have.
I think Martin, you're, you're on ends, correct? And did we assign anything beyond that?
I don't think so.
Okay. So maybe we can talk about that.
On Monday?
Yeah.
Okay. Yep.
And I guess I'd ask Bridgette and Martin to think about what additional topics we want to cover in, in the June publication.
Some things may be emerging.
All right. Any other questions on the Superintendent's Report? All right, we'll move on to Item 9, Administrative Reports.
As I said, pay structures, we're going to move.
Yeah.
So the next is then personalized learning plans. And in your packet, there's some information specific to the personalized learning plans that Stuart has put together for me. I'm going to ask Stuart just maybe give a very, very brief, just info for those in the audience that maybe don't know what PLPs or personalized learning plans are. Then just let the board have some questions, but, so Stuart.
Sure. So personalized learning plans actually come from two places, unlike some things that only come from one. One is Act 77, which was a legislative act that talked about flexible pathways and the needs for students in Vermont to have a variety of opportunities to graduate based on proficiency and based on sometimes life experience, as opposed to seat time being the way that students graduate. And also, it is part of the educational quality standards, which reemphasizes Act 77 under 2120.4 in the EQS. And basically, it says that all students eventually by 2019 will have a personal learning plan, which will guide from 7th through 12th grade their experiences in school. And that that personalized learning plan, in a sense, is the roadmap. I, I don't want to say it's an IEP for all, but it is that kind of thing of which individual students' needs, goals and desires and aspirations would be able to be put in one place and, and really looking at each student as the individual that they are. So based on the, the law and the EQS, the responsibility of school districts at this point was by this last November to have all 7th graders and all 9th graders to have personalized learning plans. And any students who are involved in dual enrollment, that is, that they're enrolled at a course in a college level in addition to their, their high school work. So basically, the report that I gave you is where we are right now in the middle and high school. The middle school, all 7th graders do have personalized learning plans, signed by their parents, that were put together during their I-time, which is a period at the end of the day. And they have a working committee that's been working all year. And we gave you the link to their website where you can see their work, their plan, their professional development needs. The high school did a course this year. There were a quarter each, so half the 9th graders in the first quarter, half the 9th graders in the second quarter, doing their personalized learning plans as they move towards, well, you've already had sophomore exhibition, which actually runs into, you know, we actually had at least 10th graders making, in a sense, a personalized learning plan. So with some of the changes in the law, really continuing to move in that direction, one of the pieces there is to figure out how to get more parent involvement, actually in both places. That's part of our plan. And I'm going to leave it right there and take any questions.
Thank you, Stuart.
What's the feedback been from parents who've signed off on the PLPs for grades 7 and 9?
That's a good question. I can check with the middle school. I can't answer that question personally, Elizabeth.
And this is just a side note, but do we know offhand what percentage or number of students are taking advantage of the dual enrollment?
I, I did, I think, report that earlier in, in the year, and I can't remember, but I'm going to say it's somewhere in the 14 to 18 range.
Percent?
No, 14 to 18 students.
Students out of the juniors and seniors?
Juniors and seniors of, you know, 350.
State, State of Vermont is very small. Total dual enrollment, I'm going to say, is less than 500.
With such a great benefit.
Well, well, it is, but you, you also have to remember how many AP courses that we also offer within the high school. So many students, you know, at this point, versus a Community College Vermont course, actually, you know, you know, I think feel it's more rigorous to take the AP course in many cases.
Most of the students, again, kind of just inquiring with them. Just, even those that are taking our higher-level courses would rather not go off-campus. They, they, it's just, they would rather not go off-campus, so. Again, that's part of the data on the dual enrollment component that has been in front of the legislature several times around how to kind of right-size and move that forward. So, anyway, thanks, Stuart.
I guess, I mean, I think it'll be helpful to actually see, and I guess I have a child who will be going this, through this, so I will actually see how it works for at least her. But for others who won't have that, I think actually seeing what it looks like is going to be helpful for us just to understand it.
Could be an actual plan, Martin?
Yeah, an actual plan, yeah. Or, or a couple of example plans, or...
Sure, well, they're on the, the website there. You can see what they did this year, but we could certainly do that and, and get that to you. Also, as we're working towards the whole graduation continuum for its proficiency, we have the personal learning plans kind of at the bottom. And, and, let me see, when we get to, you know, hopefully in the future Agenda Items, this will take personal learning plans off for a little while. But perhaps when we get to graduation requirements, again, we can look at how that personal learning plans evolve into that, into that piece.
Okay. Well, we can certainly, I mean, if it would be of interest, we can, we can print one out for you, have it, you know, have it as a conversation and a discussion point as a follow-up.
I think that would be interesting.
As opposed to, you know, you don't have to go to the, the website. Again, I think the website, as Stuart says, there's a whole lot of information in there around, around the PLPs and any other relevant areas, but.
Yeah, it, yeah, it'll be much easier to ask more pointed questions and such if we kind of really understood, this is a little too high-level for me to really... I mean, that's, yeah, it's just for us to have, understand. I know we're not supposed to get into the means and such, but it will still help us in setting policy.
This is not dissimilar to what went on when we did sophomore exhibition. When we started that process, there are a lot of folks were wondering about what, what's that going to look like? What do the students have to do? And in some cases, board members probably don't know still. So, you know, knowing how that is laid out, what are the processes? What are the expectations and outcomes, I think are, it's, you know, important.
And I believe, you know, you know, we'll have the current forms. I mean, this will be an evolving process as well because as we build on student engagement and move it to being a live document and not just something kids, quote, "fill out", I think, you know, we'll say, oh, that wasn't as good a question as we thought and this one's a better one and so on. So I just want to be happy to give you what we're working with now.
Yeah.
But knowing that, you know, over the next few years, it could look very different.
And you mentioned the sophomore exhibitions as sort of already being like a PLP. And I know, in my experience participating in those, that they certainly have the reflection part of it. But there, there wasn't a, my recollection is there's not a specific commitment on the next steps. It's more of a, a loose discussion. So is there added rigor to the sophomore exhibition now?
That's part of, yes, what we're working on right now, Elizabeth. And I also think that varied from student to student sometimes, you know, how much of their commitment to what they were doing at a time. And now we're just going to institutionalize that as being part of what they do.
Good question.
Yeah, I guess, um, yeah, I mean, I'd like to understand how well the sophomore exhibitions are working, if that's a model and for how we're doing with this. Because I've seen, it's been very varied as far as the value that, that I've seen and the ones that I've seen and, and what I've heard from many people as well. So, and that kind of actually gets me to a point that I was going to bring up a little bit later, but I might as well bring it up now when we were going to set the agenda. And that's, my understanding is that this was going to be in part our ends monitoring and how personal learning plans fit into that. I thought that this was the meeting for that. And it, obviously not, it's just the personal learning plan, which is great that we need to learn about that. I, I do want to understand how we're going to have the personal learning plans help us meet the ends. And when we get to either the future Agenda Items or the Agenda, I think we are way past due in actually seeing how we're doing on coming up with metrics for monitoring the ends. And we'll, I'll bring that up when we get to Agenda Item, but just to, to mention that now.
Any other questions, comments? All right, so we'll move on to Agenda Item 10, the Executive Limitations Policy Monitoring on 2.10 Curriculum Development and Review.
So this is worded as action. And obviously with our three, two other members not here, I would strongly advise not to be action tonight. Again, this is, this last CAMGAC is back in March of 15. There's changes here that are reflected. I don't know, I can try to highlight the, those there, but it may be easier just to take your questions specifically. Obviously, there's some redundancy in what you just heard about in PLPs. It's part of this as well. Particularly when you heard Stuart talk about flexible pathways and EQS.
So going actually to, to the end part of this, the reporting non-compliance, that's where my question is. And it's, I guess, somewhat of a follow-up to what I just was talking about. The question I have is, just trying to get my head back around how this is, how we're, we're going to go about this. With the, the proficiency-based graduation requirements, we, we've embedded the ends in that. And we're going to have the curriculum that will have those ends. You know, we'll have the PBGR and therefore also the ends. And then presumably, we are measuring how we're doing relative to that curriculum. Is that where ultimately the metrics on how we're doing on the ends is coming from?
Right, so we're, as, as we're, we're building, right now, a 9th, 10th grade performance-based assessment system because the 9th graders next year will be graduating by proficiency in 2020. And we're looking at building larger, more integrated pieces of five tasks that students would do as juniors and seniors, which would show how those individual tasks come together to something more holistic. So the only one that is, quote, "inexistent" right now is something like Project Citizen and working on Project Citizen to, as being one of the five tasks that a student would do to prove proficiency. And based on what their project was, what proficiency is and which ends, therefore, it would, would take on. So at a certain level, we'll have some 9th grade data this year because we work with 9th grade performance tasks on places where they were assessed and where the ends were embedded. But eventually, the, the goal is to have, you know, a K-12 system of performances and tasks in which we say, well, when a student does this, this ends were met. Obviously, for academic ones, those will be fairly, you know, we could do that now. But it's the transferable skills and the relationship to the ends that we also have embedded. And, you know, that is the work we're rebuilding the rubrics to do that. But that is the plan.
Yeah, and I guess that, once again, jumping, that, that's where I think we need an update on how, because I, it is all coming back to me, how you've laid, laid that out for us before. But I think we need to have a consistent update on, on our progress on that because that's really the core of what we should be doing.
Right. And, and that's really why this is non-compliance because if it was just a straight curriculum, we have a written curriculum and it wasn't related to ends, we would be in compliance. It's, it, the non-compliance comes from taking that next step to really being able to say, here's the ends, they're monitored, and we know what they are.
The evidence that we have that supports it, yeah.
So is, should it be documented in here? For instance, the, the five tasks that you're referring to would be part of the PBGRs?
Yes, but, you know, those aren't, I mean, that's at the, the, the stage of development, you know. So we have a chart I could share with you of a draft that basically says, you know, complex math task, complex science task, TED Talk-type thing, Project Citizen, complex writing communication task. But what those are, you know, we...
But it does sound like we do have one of the five in Project Citizen, so.
And we actually have used that before in an earlier monitoring report, you know, in which we were able to, probably on citizenship more than anything, you know, give more of a...
A metric there, yeah.
Yeah, because we do, we do, and we've had that for a while. But I'm happy to come back and, and, and share where we're working. But I just want to be clear, this is a work in progress that, you know, does not work like that.
There's many, I mean, again, I think this is the, this is the specific thing we're talking about. We have, we have a lot of other intangible things that are working at the same time. Data systems that collect our information, that feed that information, how we assess, how we evaluate the data. So there's, you know, we have a lot of things that are going on. And I, I feel like we're certainly not there. There's changing, changing practices that we're being required to follow. But at the same time, I think we're, we're honing in quite nicely around how we're going to be able to provide you with critical information about what we do, what guides us in what we do, and how we assess it, and how are we doing? So I, I feel like we're, we're, we're behind. But when I look at others and ask the question like, how are you guys doing? I'm, I get very different, very different responses that we're far ahead.
Yeah. I want to really be clear that actually, in terms of this work, and I can never say enough about the administrative team at the high school, the CAS is there and all the teachers, and the work that's now going at the middle school. We actually are, in my opinion, well ahead of many of the high schools in the state of Vermont when it comes to moving in this direction and really looking to what it is we're going to monitor, especially around the question of something like the transferable skills or the ends.
And I think, I think to Martin's point, though, we're likely to be reporting non-compliance for, we have been and for an extended period of time, we're likely going to report non-compliance. So that in and of itself, I think is going to be a good reason to recalibrate a little more routinely on what progress has been made against that big picture.
Yeah. Great. Good feedback.
Any other questions or comments on 2.10? All right. Yes?
I want to comment, and I hesitate to make it being a first time at 10:08, but I would really appreciate it, and I'm always being criticized for dropping my voice, and maybe we should be sitting up in the front seat. But if you could just speak up a little bit.
Yes. That's one of our other goals, is to get some better amplification for our, for, and we're very happy that you're here. And we really appreciate your, your feedback. Is there a specific question also, or?
Oh, sometimes the acquitaine was kind of goes.
You're right.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, yeah.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item 11, Legislative Update.
So actually, I asked John to do a little bit on this because those of you who are following legislative activity, there's a few things that are going on in the House right now. There's a bill H853 that's in front of, it's actually went to the floor. It's on the Senate floor and then in the Senate Ed Committee. I think as, as of today was the first kind of opportunity that they had. And in there, they're talking about some of the changes that are being considered statewide, non-residential property tax. And so what I asked John to do, which is, actually, he's done a nice job and provided you a copy at your place. And he's going to bring it up on the board and just walk you through a little bit of what, what those changes are as I think it's really important for, you know, the board to be paying attention to and/or, you know, responding back appropriately to the legislature or VSB, whatever you need to do. So anyway, John?
Well, this, this is the format we've used for a number of years now and...
Well, this, this is the format we've used for a number of years now, and last year we got up to number seven, and we were done. This year, number eight is where we ended right before the vote. So the budget book included this information, which basically was a 3.61 percent, or cent, tax decrease, 2.23 percent tax decrease, and information about what people would pay on their house, the change on, on a typical home, a typical condominium, and $100,000 of assessed value. So what's changed, and can people see that? Okay. What's changed is two, two things that I read from the summary, and, and one is that the property yield estimate changed from, this number right here, changed from 9,870 to 9,701. So what that means, where you plug that number into our formula, is that there's still a tax decrease, but it's not as much. So from, from a 3.66 cent tax decrease, it's just under one penny, .85 cent. And so the tax percentage is .52 percent. The other thing that changes with, with H-853 is a non-residential tax, a tax on businesses and rental units. That rate was one, $1.53.8, and that changed to $1.53, so that our residents, or not our residents, but our owners of rental units and our business owners, et cetera, now, instead of seeing a half-cent increase, see a very small decrease in their taxes. So that's a statewide rate, and the only, the only thing that affects us locally on that is the, the common level of appraisal, which is .9627. So we, we've heard from the legislature all along our process that this might happen, and so, so it did, so we've, it's unfortunate, but that's where, where we sit right now. That's not through the Senate, though, right? That's the House at this point.
No, it's, I looked at it today, it's currently in the Senate, went to Senate Education, where I believe, and they had a meeting today at 3:30, they were taking some testimony today at 3:30. That's really all I know. I just felt like it was important, again, this is in your V SBA, VSA news legislative update that came out March 31st, and I just thought it was important to highlight, and perhaps you want to have a conversation, or we will, in the future around, what does this mean, what should we be paying attention to, et cetera.
And as has happened in prior years, in May, when everything gets settled, maybe this will change again, so, but that's where we are. The second thing is new to a point. The law directs the Agency of Education to report data on local budget surplus, reserve fund amounts, and the purpose and use of reserve funds. We had a discussion at the business manager meeting last time about how we would provide this information, and universally, there's one place where this would be available that's consistent, and that's in our audit reports. So I don't know the details of what the legislature says at one point in time, but our last audit report is, is a place where you can measure things. And so my estimation is that they would want to see what our general fund balance is, our reserves are, and our special revenue, which are grants, et cetera, that are in our operating budget. So those two numbers are here, we had, but they're, the latest audit is 2015, so it's, it's delayed.
What was the purpose of that request to collect data?
The, I think that some legislators, this is how I heard it at the business manager meeting, were surprised that districts had carryovers, had had funds in the light of cost containment and reducing taxes, that there were some reserves that the legislature didn't know about. So our, our, we're a year ahead now, and so this was, this committed number is what we used in the current year as a carryover, $791,000, and our unassigned, 1.4 million, is what we used in 2017's budget with a couple adjustments. We, we made a $100,000 is in detail, but retirement after the fact. So I think our number was 1.3 billion. So that's what this is. Special revenue is, is all, most of it's restricted money, but the legislature would be looking at unassigned money, so that's reduced, it's about 30,000 down. Interest on completely, so I wanted to show all the balances, so in our capital projects, the elevator at the high school, that project at the end of June of 2015, still had $766,000 in it, because we had to, we're, we're doing that right now in the end of the summer. Our nutrition services, they asked for surplus, but I don't know if they want the deficits too, so just for this, this is all the things we push report. Our nutrition services deficit is $361,000. Our schools out position favorable, favorable is $290,000. And then finally, our net pension obligation is $2.7 million, our unfunded liability. So my, my thinking is, they're probably looking at these two things, but this is the whole.
Well, is, has there been a specific request of, you're, you're interpreting that going with the latest audit is the best way to present the information? Has there been any direction on how to compare apples to apples between districts and SUs?
We were asked, we were asked specifically by the agency at our business manager meeting, and this was our recommendation. Now, it's not timely, that's the problem, but it's consistent across the board.
And was there any requests for explanations where there were surpluses or deficits in terms of either special ed population, or student enrollment, or anything like that?
I don't know, don't know that yet.
Very, from my perspective.
I think it came up primarily because the cost containment that was being put in place for this coming fiscal year, I think people thought that it was subverted somehow because people were dipping into these reserves that people didn't know about. So this is asking for the information. How much thought went through this in the Ed Committee, I, I just don't know, but I know on the floor, when this was being debated, there was skepticism about why this data was being collected and how it was going to be used, and there was no clear answer for that. So I don't know.
Well, I just wanted to show you the possibilities that were there. That, from what David gave me, that's, those are the quantitative things I could show you. The other thing that caught my eye is that there's three financial proposals for future study. One is the possibility of moving education tax from a tax on property to an income tax for all payers. Second is a proposal that would make significant changes to the Ed Fund formula, designed to incentivize less than average education spending per pupil, and create a higher tax burden in districts where greater than average education spending per pupil exists. And the third thing is to write a, the agency has been directed to write a plan for how to study the system of equalized weight, pupil weights. And the plan must include examining the feasibility of adding a weight for rural students in small schools. So that's, that's kind of significant, that doesn't exist anywhere.
Right, and if I can just add a couple cents worth on, on these. That last one is perhaps of some concern, because it almost seems to me like a backdoor small school grant. Because, I mean, I understand the concept, that, that in rural communities, it's, it's harder to get the same level of opportunity in education for the same cost as in larger communities, and I understand that, and that's what Act 46 is supposed to be getting at, doing some consolidation of school districts. So, you know, this, this is, you know, I, I definitely have a red flag on this one, we'll be following that, so. But the other thing I, that John didn't mention is that there is a provision regarding unfunded mandates, and that if there's something else that the legislature's going to ask of school districts to do, and the Joint Fiscal Office says it's going to cost this amount of money, it's, needs to be in the next budget of the governor as an extra transfer from the general fund to the education fund. Although there is a lag in how the budgeting works, that, that school districts will have to pick up the cost the first year of any future initiatives.
Is there any catch-up to any recent past initiatives?
Not to my knowledge, no. No, there, there's, there's not.
So just from that little portion of your, this is a lot of information that's going on, so H-53 was one that, again, just highlighting some of the intricacies that are going on. I mean, one thing that I, I specifically view when, when these things are being written, you know, it's, it's a lot about waiting students, it, it gets into financial comparisons, and it lacks, from my perspective, the educational opportunities that are so critically important. That, to me, is where things need to be leading, or should be getting, as opposed to following. And I see that as, you could be very, very disparate in some of the funding, or similar, however you want to look at that, but have very, very different opportunities for students. And I see that from colleagues that I have all over the state, and what they are able to provide students and what we are. So anyway, that's whatever anecdotal. Couple other things in the bill, so, so thank you, John, for doing this, not in that bill, but others in this are the H-859, which is the special education. I think this is particularly interesting to me, because it starts to talk about, you know, again, the importance of providing, but where is the stream, where are the funds coming, and what's kind of the ongoing need to support, and so I'm interested to see this happen, or talked about a little bit more, but it's about creating a pilot study specifically around special education delivery, and it would require, you know, a closer look at that. And the disbursement of money, being more mindful, whether or not if it's currently being done by us, then money would come to us, or it would go to the entity in whom, who is providing it. So that was one that I think is important to be watching, or we are watching. In your, in your document, again, mandatory reporting, that's an important component, although I think that it's just emphasizing the, the reporting process, the bullying statute's re-reminded, and then lastly, H-73, which is talking about employer assessment healthcare stuff, so I think that was, those were the, those were the big highlights. But I'm sure you can dig in deeper through V SBA, but these were the ones that I just wanted to highlight. And I think it's important not to always put Martin on the spot, it's nice to have him here, but I know that we have other legislators that are always wanting to come, and maybe I need to be more mindful about when we do legislative updates, and say we'd love to have every other Wednesday, or first Wednesday of, of a board meeting, or quarterly, or something like that, to have a little bit of legislative update, so I'm sensitive to that.
But I, I guess I can probably give you an update on the marijuana legalization bill, since this, the school-
I left that one off.
Yeah, well, but I think I can get, I can give you an update now. So, so I-
Can you talk a little louder?
Yeah, upon, upon my, what's that?
Is it possible to pose a question now?
Sure.
I appreciate the document that you explained and displayed, but I wonder if the school district has a, something such as a 10-year projection that would incorporate the scenarios that have been presented, and also affixed to those dollar amounts rather than debt incurred, because I think people looking at debt incurred draw a blank at that, and the financial implications of those plans are significant in the future and could have a bearing on all the other things that you're doing. And how are the dollars, how is this made into a more concrete part of the financial planning of the school district, that you would contemplate things as varied as closing all elementaries, modernizing the high school? Is that part of the financial planning for the future?
Well, there's, I think there's a lot of information that you, you know, part of it is what, what we just heard about. As far as looking at the future and care of our facilities, we do have a long-range plan. Part of that is to identify the shortcomings that we have, particularly at the high school, and I think some of this you heard at the 22nd meeting. We didn't highlight some of the specifics there, but nonetheless, we have a need to continuously improve and upgrade, as well as this building. So those costs are encompassing in, in the plan to move forward. What we don't know, there's a fair amount of things that we don't know, which are some of the things that John was just highlighting, specific to legislative change and practice, education and funding and practice, that could, that could have a significant effect on the district. So we're trying to look at that to the future. We do have our known issue, our known work, although we have some question marks currently going on, which the board's looking at. So I don't know if that's helpful at all.
Well, I think as far as having input from the public, the financial implications of the scenarios is not presented in a way most people could understand.
It's there. Thank you.
Martin, do you want to?
Yeah, so, so we did finally get the, the education community in to testify yesterday morning, the Vermont School Board Association, Vermont Superintendent's Association, Vermont Principals Association, and also Margot Austin, who is a counselor at Burlington High School that Patrick Burke had suggested would be very good to speak. And they did speak to various problems and issues, and what needs to be done before, well, essentially, what I think the committee has learned, and where we're going to end up, is I'm pretty sure, unless something dramatically different happens, that, that the Senate bill that came over is not going to be voted out. That what we have learned is that we, what this has highlighted is that we have some significant problems in the school districts and statewide regarding use of marijuana, that we don't have the infrastructure in place to address the increasing incidence of driving under the influence of both alcohol and marijuana, or even just under the influence of marijuana. The infrastructure for dealing with that's not there, roadside tests, the laboratory, et cetera, so that's one thing. The other is that over the last number of years, resources for education and prevention at the school level has been cut back. The programs have been getting cut, and, and we really are not doing a good job of educating kids with respect to, and it's not just even marijuana, it's, it's alcohol and marijuana and such, but, but particularly marijuana, because the viewpoint by high schoolers, for instance, on the harmfulness of marijuana over the past five years, there's a, less and less kids think that it's harmful, and the science is showing that, in fact, it is harmful. We're doing very well with tobacco, like 68% of, of high schoolers understand that that's really bad for you. It's like down to 27% for people who consider marijuana use risky. So, so we believe, and, and we have started drafting a bill today, that, that we need to bolster our education and prevention in schools, we have to deal with the traffic safety, and there's some other things we need to do, regardless of whether we are legalizing or not. And right now, at least in the committee that's dealing with this, there doesn't seem to be the, that, I, I just don't see that step being taken this year. It's essentially, we have these ducks that we need to get into in a row, you know, for just dealing with the situation right now, before we think to move on to the next step, which is- which is, most testimony says that it is going to increase use. It is going to normalize. So that's kind of where we are. I've shared the school board's view. All the witnesses did a very good job of essentially sharing where we were coming from at yesterday's testimony. So that's the update.
And the superintendent's is fairly, very closely aligned to.
Yeah, all three of them were very similar, pointing out various problems, so.
So, I mean, that begs the question, have, within South Burlington, have our investments in drug and alcohol education decreased over time?
Yeah, I don't know. I was just looking at the statewide data. I was actually very interested to see how we're doing on our risk behavior survey results because that's where this data is coming from.
That's one of the data points.
Just that you know, only the statewide 15 data is out. The data we have is the 13 survey. All our use was down in the last in 13, but I don't know if it went up or stayed the same in 15. I was just focusing on tobacco myself last time because the new tobacco grant, which is competitive, where only 8% of our students said they had used tobacco in 13 in the last 30 days. That's significantly down and one of the lowest in the state. But supposedly, by the mid-April, the school-wide data for 15 should be available.
Well, that's the youth risk data, which is self-reporting. I'm looking at the educational resources through DARE and other.
Health class.
Then use.
Well, because we pay for our own, you know, SAP at the high school, we've been consistent in what we've done. So the impact, because it's district money and not the shrinking money that we've had towards tobacco, I think we have, and also the work of ACT in general with Dialogue Nights, I think we're very well positioned so that we haven't had the significant, at least so far, cutbacks that many districts have had.
Yeah, the better resource schools, such as in Chittenden County, are not the bigger concern. And it's throughout the rest of the state is the bigger concern where they don't have the programming right now to deal with the issue, so.
You know, I mean, I think that, you know, focusing, that's our job is the education. And when I think about our population, though, you have to look at the end size of school age and then non-school age and the number of Vermonters that would be affected or could influence or jeopardize safety, I think is an important component. And what is that, that's a large percentage. And I don't think that you can always just look at, you know, from my perspective, it's, they're going to become adults out in. So there's a, that ratio is pretty important, I think, to look at, which I think has been ignored.
Right. I guess the one final point is that the House did pass a bill today that would raise the age for purchase of tobacco. Over three years, it will raise it up to 21. We'll see what happens when it gets to the Senate.
Anything else on legislative activity? Monica?
Can I just ask on the change of tax, education tax potential going from being property-based to income-based? Any idea when something like that might be discussed or happen or hypothetically? That's a big shift.
Yeah, it's not going to happen overnight and certainly not going to happen this session. I'm just looking at the bill to see. I can get back to you. It's a study. They're looking.
Maybe like in the next year, we could be looking at a significant shift in how we pay our education taxes.
Unlikely. Unlikely that. I mean, if there's going to be a shift to income tax, it will be taken slow, I'm sure, if it's going to happen.
Four years or something.
I couldn't speculate.
While we're going through so much of the change is what I'm trying to point out.
But those proposals have come to the legislature cyclically before it just takes somebody to propose it. It's not usually.
Okay.
All right. Unless there are other questions, we'll move on to Agenda Item 12, setting the agenda for the April 13th meeting.
So this is fast approaching. If you didn't recognize that, it's next week. So we have information we need to get out to you for Friday. We're out on Friday. So a few things that I know I'm not ready. I'm not ready on update on parent and teacher communication and treatment of parent and guardians, I think, need to kind of go together. So I'm going to move those. Our next meeting, and this feels a long ways away, but is the May 4th meeting. So got to kind of look at that one. And that's the same one I also indicated around rightsizing with all of the other financial stuff that's going on. So I'll be working with John and Delina to kind of right-size that agenda for the May 4th one. For this one, those are two, those are two things that are coming off.
I have a quick one on number 15. The qualified contractors is ready. But that, because this is a half a million dollar and over project, needs to be a separate vote rather than consent agenda.
So that'll go to an action?
Yes.
So we'll pull that one out, John.
And what was the item, how about pay structure? Will that move to this agenda? Oh, it's on here now.
Yep.
Yes.
And do we need to put, and 2.10 is back on?
Yep.
Okay.
It is there.
Did we add back the communication?
Yes, it's on there, number six.
Got it. Okay.
Good question. Because that one, we had had on this meeting. Just so the public knows that. But because we were going to be absent two board members, I think the board felt it was appropriate to have a whole conversation.
Any other comments or questions for the April 13th agenda? All right. We'll move on to future agenda items.
I think Martin had one that we.
Yeah, update on.
We'll add that in now. Yeah.
Anything else for future agenda item?
If I get you copies of the personalized learning plans, can we take personalized learning plans off?
When it comes, we'll get it. We can put it maybe in the packet. Well, let's talk about when we do that. Thank you, Stuart.
All right. We'll move on to Agenda Item 14. Consider the minutes of the March 16th meeting.
I did have one change. And that's on page three at the top. It's the, Mr. LaLone agreed to communicate to the legislature that the board is not in favor of the legalization of marijuana.
I wondered about that.
That's not what I reported or thought I or understood what I was. It was going to be that the board's concerns regarding legalization of marijuana. I don't think we came out and said we favored this, favored whatever. It was, here's our concerns. Even though we're not really in favor, but that's not what I was.
I think that's a fair change.
Instructed to do.
So with that change, by consensus, the minutes are approved? That was actually a question, but seeing no objection. We're there, approved. Consent agenda on item 15.
Sure. So on your consent agenda, you have two resignations or resignation, actually, resignation and a retirement. Resignation to a portion of position is Rihanna Kim, .4. She's currently a 1.0. So this is a resignation of a .4 of that position. And Michelle Souls, who's a .8 physical education teacher at Chamberlain, is a retirement.
So is the .6 FTE being backfilled?
She will hold on to the .6, and the .4 will be, will be.
So is the .4 being backfilled?
Yes. Yep. It will be. And it's actually a nice fit. Works for the district. So those are the two. And then also, under consent agenda, you have bids, which are in your packet. And if you have specific questions, although John did a nice job of providing, you know, some summary for you. But I don't know if you have questions on any of those.
Any questions?
Straightforward. Thanks for the information, Ken.
So no action required? And moving to Agenda Item 16, AP orders 35, 36, and 37. Any questions? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item 17, AP order checks to Howard Center in the amount of $60,463.25 and to Essex Community Education Center in the amount of $61,045.80.
I'll move to approve those account payable orders.
On second motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. And any other questions, comments, feedback? All right. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So.
All in favor? And we're adjourned.
Thank you very much.
Wow.